Council meeting to order. Ms. Liz Ebert say a prayer and pleasure the legion. Ms. Liz Ebert.
Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Bless us as we meet together, Lord, and we pray. Bless the singing of your praise and reading of your word and sharing in our fellowship and meetings. The prayers that we be heard. Bless us as we meet together, dear Lord, we pray. Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
We welcome you to the Lafayette City Council Meeting. As Presiding Officer and Chair, I would like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the request form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistant is available if needed. Items for submission to the council should be handed to Council Clerk Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left in the middle. When addressing the council, state your name and title for the official record. The five-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontation of statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolutions and not by robed rules of order. All documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement in boards or commission. If interested, call 337-291-8800. That's 337-291-8800. Okay, Chair announcement. Items 11, 12, 13, and 14 have proposed amendments, often by legal to add Hancock Whitney Bank as a paying agent. For those tuning in from home or other location, call 337-291-8428. 291-8428. If you wish to speak, please keep in mind that there is a delay when viewing on TV and via the Internet. I have no chair announcements. Any council members' announcements?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Lozorg, you have the floor.
Uh, Mr. Chair, fellow council members, members of the public. As you all know, we are going through a very trying time right now with the incidents that have unfolded since the death of Mr. George Floyd. And I've been asked repeatedly over the past three weeks or so, what was my opinion on the issue and whether or not I was going to be making any public comments on the issue. I don't believe in talking just for the sake of talking. I don't believe in talking unless I have something to say. Um, and I do. Um, there's a, one of my favorite spiritual songs, if you will, has the refrain, "When the spirit says move, you move." And, uh, I have been moved tremendously since these events have unfolded. And to make sure I keep myself on track and not get off course, because this is a very touching topic for me. So, kind of jotted some notes down, and I'm going to use that as my reference, if you will. As we're all aware, from the death of Mr. George Floyd in Minneapolis, Minnesota several weeks ago, there have been continuous protests across the United States. From Minneapolis to Miami, New York to New Orleans, and Seattle to South Beach, and all points in between, including our own backyard. People of various races, ethnic origins, religious preferences, political ideologies, socioeconomic backgrounds, and sexual orientations have bonded together in unity to demand an end to discrimination and the systemic racism that has existed since the founding of our nation. From the beginning of slavery in 1619 to the Trail of Tears, the end of slavery, from Reconstruction Era to the Jim Crow Era to the Civil Rights Movement, from Emmett Till in Moonee, Mississippi in 1955 to Rodney King in Los Angeles in 1991, to Michael Ferguson, Michael Brown in Ferguson, Missouri, and Eric Garner in Staten Island, New York in 2014, and ultimately to George Floyd in Minneapolis in 2020. American history is replete with instances of discrimination and disparate treatment of Black and Brown people. While we may disagree on the tactics used by some people expressing their frustration with the current state of affairs, I would hope that we can all agree that things simply cannot continue as they have for the, over, for the past 400 years. Even though the current focus is on police misconduct and vigilante justice, the scars cut a whole lot deeper. Discrimination also occurs in the banking industry, home mortgage industry, hiring and promotion practices of Fortune 500 companies, and the issuance of government contracts. Among the calls for reform are demands to defund police departments. While I do not agree with this demand, I do feel it's long overdue to reevaluate how policing is done and what the duties and responsibilities of law enforcement officers should be. Police officers today are simply asked to perform duties and handle situations that they are not trained or equipped to handle. This places the health, welfare, and safety of the officers themselves, as well as the citizens they are supposed to protect and serve in jeopardy. While we should always support law enforcement, we should also hold accountable that very small percentage that violate public trust and engage in the kind of behavior we have presumed that just because we haven't seen some of the events unfold here that have happened in other places, that it can't happen. There's also been a renewed call for removal or relocation of various Confederate statutes and monuments from public places. Most of these were constructed during the post-slavery era and during the Jim Crow era from the 1890s to the 1960s. They were constructed for the sole purpose of intimidation, to remind slaves of their, freed slaves of their place, and are a constant reminder of our dark past. They are not about heritage, but about hate. In the very near future, this council and administration may be called on to make a decision concerning the removal of the Alfred Mouton statue downtown Lafayette, constructed in 1922 during the Jim Crow era. It's time for this community to come together, put our dark past behind us, move the mindset, and move the statue. This is truly a seminal moment in American history, and how we respond will define our future for the next 100 years and beyond. After all the protests have ended, all the signs put away, and there are no more selfies to take, where will we be? The United States of America, the state of Louisiana, and the city of Lafayette has never and will never reach its full potential until we recognize the full value of every citizen began to treat people as equals and to do as Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Judge people not by the color of their skin, but the content of their character." I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And thank you, council member, for your indulgence.
Any other council discussion? I see there's none. Okay, Mayor President Gilery on his, or his rep, any executive report?
Nor shall any state deprive anyone of life, liberty, or justice. Fourteenth Amendment. The due process clause is so precious that it's in our Constitution twice. I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Ms. Williams, do you have any, any public comments?
Yes, sir. We do have public comment for today. The first speaker is Wallace Senegal. He will be followed by Tim Supple. And Wallace called in his call earlier today, so that's why he's first.
A community activist. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I thought Mr. Senegal had used his time at the last meeting.
No, that was at the joint meeting.
Now, wait a minute. I know, I know y'all got me confused on, on the fixing the chart and all that and the way it's all going right now. I'm still trying to get used to that, you know? But, uh, I still have the same amount of time again. And you're using up my time, Mr. Lozorg.
Yeah, the five-minute rule does apply.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, you stop the clock, you start it back now. You know, I don't know if I could bring this back up again, because it was a joint meeting last time, and we doing it on a separate meeting. We doing a city council meeting this time. And I'm still asking, you know, you guys to consider, you know, putting on the ballot us voting for our own Chief of Police. You know, Mayor Gilery, I wish you have something to do with that so we could, the people of the city of Lafayette or the parish of Lafayette vote for our own Chief of Police. I just see everybody else have, they vote for their chief. I think we should vote for our chief also. Again, my name is Wallace Senegal, and I approve the message.
Next speaker is Tim Supple, followed by George Bentley.
Oh, okay. One second, please. Mr. Mayor President?
I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that, Mr. Senegal. You know, there's a lot of people that would share in your, in your position. Now, I could be wrong, but it's my understanding that it's alleged, I believe the legislature controls that. I think the legislature determines based on the population, so we'd have to work in conjunction with our Lafayette delegation. But there's a lot of people that share in your position, share, you know, share in that position. Right now, it is an appointed position, and we have a, one council member here, another council member in the other parish that will serve on the committee to help me select and give me some advice on, on who to select. And that's about as close as we can get to the people's voice under the current laws. So it's very fair what you're saying, and I think a lot of people would support that. But under our current law, not only is it appointed, but then it becomes a civil service position. So it's, it's, the only elected position that has any control over that is, is very restricted in that control because of the civil service laws, and that's just the truth. The other way to give accountability to the people is to let them vote, as you suggest. So I do invite discussions with the Lafayette delegation, but until that time comes, I am confident in our abilities together to work towards a, in a fair and objective approach to, to pick the best and brightest to serve our people. So thank you. Were you a first-time caller, Mr. Supple?
A what?
A first-time caller?
No.
It's a joke. It's a bad joke, but it's a joke.
Um, am I ready to go?
Yes, sir.
I am here to make a statement on behalf of a group of people. On December 27th, 2019, a group of citizens filed a lawsuit to challenge the timeline for public notice relative to the implementation of ordinances passed by this council to create economic development districts for the city of Lafayette. Prior to agreeing to file these suits, this group unanimously agreed that its singular principal cause would be to seek public discussion and a vote of the people within those economic development districts. These resolutions for authorizations of the economic development districts were brought to LCG council without any meaningful prior notice or discussion. By their own admission, those who initiated the EDDs had been in the planning stage for almost a year before any public notice or resolution to bring it before the council was introduced. Even members of the council and parties included within the economic development districts acknowledged they knew nothing of the resolutions in advance of their first public notice, only days before the introduction. No public meetings were held at any time throughout the year-long process. All parties, including the proponents and council members, acknowledged the fact that the districts were gerrymandered to eliminate any voters within the EDD areas for the sole purpose of avoiding a vote by the very citizens affected by and burdened by the taxes and regulations to be created by these EDDs. Ignoring pleas to delay the implementation until public discussion could be had, the council passed the authorization for their creation. The assertion that the LCG council public meeting was a public discussion is disingenuous at best, as that forum, this forum, is not a discussion but only allows the public to comment. It is not a forum designed for questions or exchange of information. While we, the plaintiffs, still hold the principle of allowing citizens to vote on all local tax issues, we realize any further legal battle fought to preserve that principle has been and will be paid for solely by the individual plaintiffs, while the defense of the creation of these taxing districts will be paid for by the public funds collected in the forms of taxes for, of those very voters who had no voice. To put it simply, we cannot afford to compete with the entire LCG government funding of the lawsuit, which seeks to suppress the rights of voters. With that said, we have instructed our council to withdraw the lawsuit. I would just add, since I drew the short straw of the group, that today, tonight, I heard conversations about transparency. This council, one of the last things it did was eliminate transparency and acknowledge that transparency does not exist in the creation of these EDDs. Then the first thing the new council did was pass the EDDs without any discussion, any transparency, or any input from the public. I ask you to listen to your own words, and in the future, try and live by them. Thank you. If you have any questions, tomorrow morning, we will file our motion to end the lawsuit. Thank you.
Next speaker, George Bentley, followed by Andrew Duyong.
I'm George Bentley. Uh, I want to touch on something only because it just popped up in a previous conversation. I think one of the things that this body should do, and this government should do, is have a talk with our state representatives and see about doing something about the major thoroughfares in Lafayette, most of which are state roads, not city roads. When you call up about getting something done to one of the state roads, you call the city about painting or signage or this sort of thing, they automatically refer you to. And in some cases, well, nobody knows, Ms. Cook couldn't tell who owned, couldn't tell me who owns a part of Hugh Wallace Road. By the way, it's state, according to the state. Finally found out. It is state road. The section between Jean Mouton and Calle Salum is state road. Drive it. Then you get to go to your front alignment and your dentist, okay? We need to do something about our roads. It's ridiculous. And I'm talking about they're blacktop, and they've got lumps all over, and they rattle your teeth. I happen to drive a vehicle, it's a truck with, with heavy-duty suspension. It's horrible. Uh, I don't know what the procedure is for that, but maybe that needs to be addressed. And pointing out to some of our state representatives, maybe they need to do their job. Okay, anyway. The reason that I'm here is I need a question answered, okay? I'm very concerned about the blockage of the outfall ditch along Fiala Road on the south and west side from being a wide-open ditch, six, five, six feet deep and 22 feet across, to being a 24-inch culvert and provides the, provides the, uh, outflow and the overflow of the cooley coming out of the new development. It's been swaged down. I tried to, tried to get, get Ms. Cooks to address the issue of what would go there before it went there, because if they, I didn't know for sure where the entrance was going to be. They put it on the downside with a cooley in the middle. They could have put it on the upside. They actually have a temporary entry into the thing on the upside. On the upside, there would have been zero problem with drainage. But taking that and taking whatever that size is, I have to get one of the hydraulic engineers to kind of figure it out, the 24 inches in diameter, it should have been a box culvert or a bridge, and then it hits the road. The thing that I'm concerned about is if that situation is higher than my slab and I'm hot, I might get an inch or two of water. Not a foot, an inch or two, but guess what that does, okay? My concern is, how do I go about, who do I go to to address making sure that Fiala Road for sure does not get another blacktop on top of it? In the past 25 years, there have been at least four blacktoppings of that road, and I've been there for 45 years, and it was a couple before that. So I'll bet you it's got a foot of blacktop on it. My concern is, I want to find out from whomever with this parish government, city government, excuse me, is responsible for stopping making the levee a little higher. Because remember, anytime you blacktop a road without scraping off the top of it, you're just raising a levee around this, this town. It's one of the reasons we have some of the drainage problems that we do have, okay? So tell me right now, if anybody can tell me who I need to approach about making sure that that does not get done, or at least having them figure out why they should do it and convincing me. Who do I go to?
Yeah, you ready to speak?
Yeah.
Are you finished, mister?
I'm third in lines.
I'm not, wasn't quite finished, but I got a question I'd like to have answered.
Yeah, I mean, if anyone can provide them that answer?
You know, the legislative...
I just want an answer to, to stop it.
Right.
Or who to go to to...
I counted three questions. I counted three questions. I'm, I think the middle question was the most important, and it's about evaluation.
I still have something I'd like to bring up.
Sure, I don't want to, I don't want to dig into your time. I'm looking at 58 seconds, so I think it's stopped. The, our chair has stopped the clock, so that's...
We do have one other little something to say.
That's okay. Look, but, short, short answer, I think we should evaluate like we do every other road. I, I'm not an engineer.
You?
I'm going to talk to our Public Works Director, and we're going to look into it.
Chad's calling, so Chad and I are going to have that.
Oh, Chad, are you watching back there? He takes very, very good, studious notes. So I appreciate you bringing to our, that's why we have these public, I can't guarantee anything, but I guarantee that we evaluate it and maybe give you that answer as to why or why not, or the thoughts. And then you can, you can counter it, and we can start over if we need to. That's it.
And the first person who gets flooded before me is Judge Jules Edwards. He's lower, he's next door.
You shouldn't flood a judge.
Not about, okay, the issue has, you know, it...
It's changed?
There was, there was no issue before. Then they put it in and did exactly what I told you. We needed to stop.
And we did have a conversation about that.
But it didn't get stopped.
Well, and so have you talked to them about why they put it like that? Maybe there was, you know, a reason that it was put like that, that, and again, we'll have to...
I have my notes speaking to a certain engineer with Public Works over a year ago.
Okay. Is that person still with Public Works?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, then maybe we, we need to, we'll just, we need to follow up with that then, and we can...
Got to be more than happy to sit down with you and, 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 or, and discuss what I, the discussion I had with our taxpayer engineer.
Okay. Well, that'll be good. I look forward to it.
I even mentioned common sense. I guess I shouldn't have told him that. Okay, I got 30, I got 58 seconds. Okay, we'll be in touch with that.
No, go ahead.
And I want you to give your number to our officer here before you leave, that, that way we have it.
Okay, fine.
Go ahead. He's got a few more minutes?
Can I have my four seconds? No, okay. No, the, the, the thing I wanted to point out is this, okay? About 18 months ago, I met with Mr. Brian Smith, and I asked him, "What is your job with the parish?" And he said, "I'm in charge of cleaning and maintenance of existing drainage ditches." Had the same meeting with him after they, he came over to my house, my rent house next door, after the royal mess they made, eight hours after this ditch, it used to be dry after they shot it and scraped it. It had six inches of water sitting in the high side of it, the uphill side, okay? Got it? And I asked him this question. "Mr. Smith, what do you do with city parish government?" And he says, "I clean and maintain the ditches." 18 months later, and, and that's a new, I thought he was the drainage czar. I found out, we don't have one. I had a discussion with Mr., Mr. Nocken about that. He said he thought his position was much more than that. But as far as I'm concerned, he's doing the same job he was doing before. Is that an up pay, up, new job we had to have?
Okay, thank you, sir. Mayor President, you have something to say?
Well, we just have to agree to disagree on his new position. He, he is much more than that, but his primary focus is maintaining what does exist, and he's doing a great job.
Self-pictures, essentially.
He's doing a great job. That's my strong position.
Next speaker is Andrew Duyong.
Ms. Ebert had...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Ebert?
Did you get to speak? You were good. Uh, I actually do have a question, but he brought up a really good point, is at the end of my last term, and then you've continued this since and expanded it, is that we used to always have issues, because I have a ton of state roads in my district, Johnson and Vaster, anyway. So we've continued picking up more state roads, cutting the grass, and, I mean, my constituents have noticed, and they've noticed a difference, because the state is now giving us some of our money back to be able to cut our own grass. The gentleman brings up a really good point. Could, could we do something similar to maintain those state roads? Is get even, is that something you're already working on? Look at you.
Hey, watch out. We're in the same page. No, that, that's good, but let me build on what you're, what you're saying, Council One, a woman, you make a good point too. And that is, if it's in our city, we own it. That's my mentality. If it's in our city, if it's in our jurisdiction, unincorporated areas, and to the extent our municipalities where we can help, we have to take pride. This is our home, whether that's cutting grass, whether that's cleaning ditches. Now, there's certain rules that we have to apply, and some are a little more convoluted than others, especially when you're talking about cutting grass over overpasses. I found that out very quickly, that that, there's a lot of rules to that, and that's okay. That's good. Cleaning underpasses, also, lots of rules to that, but that's all right. But, um, but this is, that's the mentality that, that the administration takes. I believe the council probably shares in that, that mentality. And, and the state, to their credit, has been really good. Mr. Chair, do I have the, the Florida?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you. I just want to address, because I, I do want our constituents, and thank you, Mr. George, I always appreciate you. Um, I do want you to have faith and confidence in our, in our local Lafayette delegation. Senator, Senate President Paige Cortez, Jean-Paul Cousseau on the House side, all of, all of our Lafayette delegation, they're really, really working hard for us. Recently, in this, in this, in the regular session, they, they were able to just secure $3 million to the University Avenue Corridor Project. So you mentioned gateways, Mr. George, about to our city and throughout our city. The council has spoken recently on a project that's going to help out the corridor tremendously. We also have our Lafayette delegation in Baton Rouge and our Louisiana delegation, led by our congressman and one of his staff members, Colonel Ellison, is working very hard in Washington to work on this thing called the Build Grant, which falls into a lot of little minor projects, but this is, this is a major gateway to our, to our city and to, really, to our parish. So really proud about that. We also, with the previous city parish or council, has allocated, had allocated some, some funding too, to this project. So again, I'm mentioning University just because that is a, a major, major fairway, like you said. Also, the Avangeline Thruway, very loud and clear, either pave it or connect I-49. It's time to stop playing. I'm tired of having to have a football helmet when we drive down Avangeline Thruway. I know everybody can agree to, agree with that, but a lot of progress. Again, our Louisiana delegation and Congress seems to be aligned. Our governor's aligned. The Department of DOTD is led by a gentleman that lives in Lafayette, so he is very, very familiar with the Avangeline Thruway. Your local city council, parish council, and administration were all aligned. Your local city council, parish council and administration were all aligned on this project of connecting I-49. So we're, we're making progress. I'm excited about it. But also other, other roads that affect both the state and, and locally. Recently, you mentioned, you may have heard on the parish side, the reconstruction, not, not blacktop, in reconstruction of, of places that have been neglected for a long time because of funding in other areas. Jolie Road plus seven other area, seven other roads in that area are going to be reconstructed. This is very important. These are your tax dollars that you get to see and feel, you know? So I'm very proud of the, the work and definitely want to commend our Lafayette delegation in Baton Rouge, because they really are fighting hard for us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Ms. Veronica, next speaker.
Next speaker, Andrew Duyon, followed by Takuna El Shabazz.
Good evening, Council.
Yes, sir.
My name is Andrew Duyon, and I worked for LUS in upper management for almost 30 years, and I retired in 2017. A recent article from a local news outlet reported about the consulting engineer's concerns about a lack of an experienced director at LUS. As a customer owner of LUS, this concerns me greatly, and here's why. First, the city of Lafayette is in violation of its bond covenants governing LUS. LUS has been without a qualified director for about two years. The covenants clearly require the consulting engineer to approve the qualifications of the director. The engineer is apprised of Mayor Gilery in writing of the interim director's lack of, lack of qualifications. They have further pointed out this deficiency in their annual comprehensive engineering report that's also required by the covenants. Why is this important? Well, back in 19, in the 1940s, LUS had a system that was not keeping up with the growth of the city. Service reliability and safety were poor. As Lafayette went to the bond market, for the first time, it was required to engage a consulting engineer to advise it on management issues and to approve the qualifications of the director, thereby giving bondholders some assurance that management of the system would be professional and not based on politics. So in 1949, Lafayette approved these requirements in its bond resolution, giving it the model that it has followed ever since. In that model, our covenants say the mayor does not and should not get to say if a candidate is qualified. That is solely the job of the consulting engineer. To remove the engineer from the equation would mean that A, Lafayette is violating its covenants, that is, it's breaking its promises. And B, it intends to go back to a time 70-plus years ago, when the system was in jeopardy due to poor management. More history, in the past 25 years, and I worked through these times, there have been two occasions when a mayor quarreled with the consulting engineer over director appointment. In the mid 90s, Mayor Kenny Bowen, he tried several appointments before he finally hired a qualified one approved by the engineer. That was Terry Huvall. He's a professional engineer, significant work experience with an electric utility, 16 years of service before becoming LUS director in 1994. Now, in 2020, Mayor Gilery is ignoring the engineer's comments about qualifications. The difference between Mayor Bowen and Mayor Gilery is that, to his credit, Mayor Bowen understood and respected the role of the engineer, while our current mayor has not exhibited that same thing. Bowen eventually took the covenants seriously and he acquiesced. The president administration should follow that precedent and move quickly to start the hiring process. The second reason that we should be concerned, utilities don't just perform well by accident. Well-managed, well-led utilities perform well. LUS is at a critical juncture. It is now deciding how it is going to provide for its future electric generation options in the IRP. It needs leadership that understands the highly technical, complex and evolving utilities business. A person who has deep experience in utilities practice and can, and can provide strategic direction. The interim director has absolutely no experience in those areas, none. A director cannot just delegate his, his leadership to his or her direct reports. Every LUS customer should be very concerned that the administration has what amounts to a political appointee running its quarter billion dollar a year business. It should be noted that they're paying the interim director a quarter million dollars a year for his inexperience. LUS has a proud history of being run by strong, qualified, non-political, serious utilities professionals. Let's correct this wrong. LUS also has a history of reliable service and low rates. These things shouldn't be taken for granted. And the third reason we should be concerned, someone's going to get hurt. The utilities business is dangerous. High voltage environments, confined spaces, heavy equipment. When leadership lags and organization gets complacent, steps are skipped, procedures are set aside, our systems get compromised. Safety starts at the top and you have someone at the top that does not have the experience and background to effectively maintain utility standards of care and safety. So why should we care about this? Our public utility is being undermined by our administration. The director is not qualified and we're losing the good young professional leadership that was in place. We, you included, all of us have been way too complacent. Let LUS and LUS Fargo operate as businesses and start by getting the right leadership at the top. Get LUS and LUS Fargo out of politics, insist that the mayor and administration take the covenants seriously. The process of hiring a qualified director needs to start immediately. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think Mr. Gilery might have a question for you.
Yes, sir, what's your name again?
Andrew Duyon.
And what was your position at LUS?
I was support services, customer and support services director, manager.
Okay, what leadership roles did you have in LUS?
On CPA, I was the, on the executive management team, I reported directly to Terry Huvall.
And Terry Huvall was, was the previous LUS director, is that correct?
Yeah, you know that.
Okay, it was that, yes, correct, okay, good. Now, in your opinion, does the director have any say-so off of financial matters? Does the director, I mean, because you're qualified, you have a lot more experience than I do at LUS. Does the director of LUS have any say-so over financial matters of this enterprise?
Yes, but that's not their primary responsibility.
Okay, but they couldn't.
I see where you're going with this.
Yeah, they couldn't delegate that, is that correct?
Uh.
I mean, you just said delegate, so they couldn't delegate that responsibility, is that correct?
They couldn't delegate that.
The director of LUS could not delegate his or her fiduciary duty to monitor financial matters, is that correct?
Okay, sir, so, hold, that's.
May I ask a question?
No, no, that's.
I'm up here making a public comment and I'm getting into debate with the mayor.
Yeah, but that's, that's, we, we're going to move forward.
You don't have to answer, but I think not to answer is to, to answer, but that's okay.
Okay, that's, that's it, let's, let's move on.
Your question is very relevant.
Mr. Chair, Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, we're going to move forward, there's too much back and forth right now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Ms. Veronica Williams.
Takuna El Shabazz, followed by Khadija Rashad.
Good evening, once again. I am Takuna Malana El Shabazz. I'm chairperson of CCBE, Conscious Council of Black Elders. I'm also the author of the book, Black I Am, Cajun Creole I Am Not. There are currently three major killers in the black community. COVID-19 virus, police brutality, and black self-hate. What does all three killers have in common? They all have the same mama and the same daddy, systemic racism and white supremacy. There still is global mourning and protests all over America for the murder of George Floyd. In just a few days past, there has been another shooting of another black man by police officer and two mysterious hanging in California. What's killing black people are not guns, ropes, but the systematic debasing of black life in defense of and in advocacy of white supremacy by white racists. UL as a public educational institution, the Lafayette City Parish Government and all its related entities are complicit in giving life to that racist attitude and its reckless and selfish promotion of Cajun, Acadiana, Creole, and the fleur-de-lis symbol. Historically, Cajun and nigger are equivalent racial slur words to black people who know their history. Creole is a sub-label given to light-skinned slaves who are the offspring of French slave owners who systematically rape young black girls and black women. Acadiana is something you made up. The fleur-de-lis is an African flower that white French slave owners molded into a branding iron to brand their runaway slaves for identification. You glorify, you glorify the story of Cajun history is a testimony of black people suffering in insults. UL Athletics has $32 million operating budget, almost $7 million for coaching salaries. However, most of the black, most of the black athletes are on the football team, track and, and basketball teams that are revenue-producing sports. What do the black community and UL black athletes receive for their contribution, their economic contribution to the well-being of this city and the university? They receive historical distortions, cultural insults, and a debasing self-identity crisis that often leads to the exacerbation of black denial, a form of self-hatred. No mistake is being made here. I want to be very clear. This is a government-funded nigger-making process for black people all over again. The message is clear. Take your knee off the historical, cultural, and economic neck of black people. We can't breathe. There are four popular chants that you hear the protesters repeat every day. I can't breathe. No justice, no peace. White silence is violence. Black lives matter. The Cajun propaganda issue, believe me, is southwest Louisiana potter keg. It will blow, and it will blow soon. I am encouraged by all those who are standing for the right thing. I am especially encouraged by the boldness of our youth who are fearless, standing firm against great odds. The more black people, especially our young youth, understand the potential long-range negative impact of not addressing this issue, the resistance will get greater as they become more knowledgeable. Whether there is the absence of justice, the presence of peace is always negated by natural law. I'm going to repeat that again, because I want you to understand what I'm saying to you. Where there's the absence of justice, the presence of peace is negated by natural law. What you see around the world is the absence of justice in the treatment of black people, and you have an uproar. You will not find peace where justice does not live. Black I Am, Cajun Creole I Am Not. There's a beautiful African phrase that is often used. Those lasimatutashindabelashaka. Lasimatutashindabelashaka, which loosely translated means, no matter the odds, we shall conquer. Thank you.
Mr. Takuna, I have a question for you. A statement you made earlier, I think you came about a month ago, and you talk about the Cajun. I'm very interested in knowing about that. And you say something a few minutes ago to all your closing statement, black I Am, Cajun I'm, I'm not. What do you mean by that?
Our culture and our history does not lie in the understanding of Cajun people who are exiled from Nova Scotia, Canada. We did not come from Nova Scotia, Canada. We came here in the holes of ships. So even though Cajun people claim and recognize their historical roots, it is not one that they themselves were very proud of until a few weeks ago. So therefore, the fact that Cajun people choose to clean up whatever they perceive as unworthy or was rejected before in their image, we applaud. Our problem is, why do you use our tax dollars to mislabel us? We are not Cajun. We're not anti-Cajun, we're just not Cajuns. And that's the difference. So as long as you, as a community, continue to promote Cajun using tax dollars, using our funds as well, to mislabel and to misrepresent us, that's a problem. We have young black children now who prefer being Cajun and Creole than black. Everything of worth has been relabeled Cajun. What you probably heard last time I spoke is that if white people in this area would reverse the process, and if Cajun and nigger are historical twin slurs, everything you see Cajun, put the word nigger on it, and see what kind of world would you be living in? Would you send your children to UL and have them come home with a raging nigger shirt? Would you go buy you some nigger fried chicken? Some raging nigger fries? Would you allow your children to be absorbed in a culture that a slur word was actually created for us as it was for Cajun, and then you allow yourself to be absorbed in that culture? We say that is culture genocide, and it produces self-hatred. And whenever a people cannot understand their economics, their political position, their social position from the truth of their history and culture, you've got a people that's going to be messed up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
Next speaker is Khadija Rashad, followed by Ezekiel Mutan.
Well, it's, it's really hard to come after Brother Takuna, that's for sure. But I, I did want to say is that Cajun and nigger are both derogatory terms, and it still is. And one of the main reason why we don't attend the Cajun Dome is because of it being with the derogatory term as the Cajun's Dome instead of the Lafayette Civic Center, which it was supposed to be named. And also, I would also like to say that on, in behalf of what Brother Takuna mentioned, in, in reference to George Floyd, I, I wanted to find out if indeed it would, I'm not asking permission, I'm just trying to say that I would like to kneel for eight minutes and 46 seconds in memory of George Floyd. And if that would be a problem, you, you just have to either kick me out or do whatever you wanted to do. But in actuality, also, when the finance committee person came up here, I wanted to find out what happened to the $180,000 that was put on the side for the Clifton Scheneer statue at the Clifton Scheneer Center that was never given, that was never given back to the community. There was $180,000 or more that was raised, and I wanted to find out where did that money go? Was it rolled over? And is it possible that we could get the money back to put the statue with, with the increase of interest? I, I don't know what, what y'all did with it at all. And just, just maybe somebody could find the paper trail for that. And, because I think that'd be like also a good representation for the Zodico community here in southwest Louisiana.
Okay, Ms. Khadija, since I've been on the council, gone on, what, four and a half years, there was no way near $180,000. I checked into it, so I don't know where those figures you're getting from, not saying you're not correct.
Right.
But I checked into that because I was interested in putting the, the Clifton Scheneer statue as well. But there was no way close to 100, over $100,000.
Not even 160?
Not even 160,000. Because I was under impression too, and I did call, contact different people that were, that did fundraising, what have you. It, it was just talked about, it never was collected.
Oh.
So, I mean, really, really. I checked into it two, about three years ago. Nowhere near $160,000.
Okay, do you have a paper trail so I could just?
Well, I did some, well, I don't have anything with me now, but I can share it with you when I, when I get my hands on it.
Okay.
We can talk about it tomorrow.
Okay.
We can talk about it tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ezekiel Mouton, followed by Miles Mott.
Hello, council members and citizens of Lafayette. Hello. I had my phone, and my phone died, but I had a few scriptures that I wanted to share, just not really suggestions, but a comment. The first scripture that I read was Isaiah forty-three nineteen. And I wish I had my phone so I could read it exactly. But one thing that towards the end of the scripture, God had said to Isaiah was that he would make new things in the land, and he will restore the streams for the wasteland. And I kind of, and it kind of brought me back to the drainage situation, just saying that God will make a way for that to actually be possible and actually not make it so hard and so difficult for us as a people to, you know, really fight so hard on a situation that really, is really important to us. But also, to really say that God is going to enforce change in Lafayette is not necessarily something that, you know, we need to force or we need to do. It's change is going to come no matter what, whether we like it or not. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Exact scripture. Okay, Isaiah forty-three nineteen. It says, "See, I am doing a new thing. Now it springs up. Do you not perceive it? I am making a way in the wilderness and streams in the wasteland." So, you know, it's just, God is going to do a new thing in Lafayette. It's not really something that we can ask for. It's not really something that we can sit here and tell you guys that we want, because it's ultimately, it's not up to y'all. It's up to God. And he has the final say-so. And the new things that's coming and the change that's being made is going to benefit us in the right way. We need to stick together, and we need to have a solid mind and focusing on change and actually focusing on the new things. The Bible also says to, we have a vision to write it down and make it plain. And so if we have something that we need to, you know, work on as a people, we need to, you know, step outside of our roles and step outside of our politics and step outside of everything that we know, we've learned, and just try to see what God wants. Try to focus on that and try to meditate on that, but just ultimately letting God's will be done. Because, you know, like I said, at the end of the day, it's not up to us. So we have no say-so, and whatever happens, God is in control. And that's it. Thank y'all.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And sir, thank you. Thank you for bringing scripture to this very hollow chamber. And, you know, I think the underlying tone is, the gentleman mentioned, "Thy will be done." We, we're not God. We don't know, but we are God's people. And Lafayette, Louisiana is not absent of our almighty God, who has blessed us with grace. We don't have all the answers. And this gentleman just said that, but he gave us hope, and that's good, because he spoke the word of God. Thank you.
Final speaker, Miles Mott.
Good evening, council. Mayor President, how you doing? My name is Miles Mott. I'm coming as a representative of the Downtown Development Authority as its president and chairman of the board. I just want to specifically and narrowly address the Economic Development District that was created far downtown. The first thing I'd like to do is to defend this government body. And so far as any allegations were made in the past or present about the procedure and process not being transparent, I think we had four or five open hearings in, before this body. The next thing is this, the creation of the Downtown EDD was initially, initially started by this government. And the Downtown Development Authority recognized it as a good vehicle to develop downtown, primarily because of the lack of funding in the past for certain projects, particularly infrastructure. The, all of the process and procedure when the EDDs were passed, again, the DDA's EDD, were done in strict accordance with Louisiana law. There was nothing beyond Louisiana law, nothing surreptitious, nothing disingenuous about it. It was public hearings. We followed the law to the letter. The lawsuit that was filed by certain parties against the Downtown Economic Development was filed with absolutely, absolutely no merit. There was a dearth of merit to that. In fact, the statute cited in the petition was the wrong statute. Yet, we had to defend that. It is incumbent upon the Lafayette city parish government, particularly the mayor president, to defend the laws and the ordinances passed by this body. The LCG hired an attorney. He began to defend this lawsuit. A motion for summary judgment was prepared, a stellar motion on solid foundation to defend against this meritless suit. Without questioning the wisdom, the motion for summary judgment filed by the administration was withdrawn. At that point, the Downtown Development Authority stepped in to fulfill its fiduciary duty as a party to the contract with this council and with the administration for the EDD. We were required to hire an attorney and to defend the lawsuit ourselves. We did not have a choice to do that. This city parish government spent money defending the suit until the summary judgment was withdrawn. Our DDA was required to spend money to defend it from that point up through now. All of that money is tax money. So what we're left here is, yes, there was tax money spent to defend a fundamentally, absolutely meritless lawsuit. And what we're going to do forward is to ensure and endeavor that when this lawsuit is defeated or dismissed, that it will be done in such a manner that it cannot be brought again. It, it is a poverty to allow citizens to file meritless lawsuits, have the city parish government, this administration and the DDA spend significant taxpayer money, and then throw up their hands and say, there's no merit, we're going to back out of the suit. Well, we're going to try the best we can with the courts to have this suit dismissed to where it can't be brought again, and this cannot be done again with a suit with absolutely no merit. Thank you.
No other speakers, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that concludes this. So let's move on, move forward. This is a public hearing. Blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, please read item number six.
City Resolution eighteen twenty twenty. A resolution of the Lafayette City Council informing the State of Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality that the Lafayette utility system has taken the appropriate action concerning permit requirements contained in LPDES permits numbered LA three-six-three-eight-two, LA three-six-three-seven-four, LA three-six-three-nine-one, and LA four-two-five-six-one.
Need a motion and a second, please. Motion by Ms. Haver, second by Mr. Andy Nakain. Council discussion. I see there's none. Any public comments, Ms. Williams? Need a vote on this resolution?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
City Resolution nineteen twenty twenty. A resolution of the Lafayette City Council approving water and sewer service outside of the corporate limits of the city of Lafayette in accordance with Ordinance thirty-two-thousand-fifteen LPUA four-two-zero-seven Cameron Street.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Council discussion. I see there's none, Ms. Williams. Oh, I'm sorry, there is someone. Ms. Haver.
I know the gentleman's here to speak on it, but if you want to come on up, I know it's your property.
Oh, this isn't it? Okay. Mine is Tolson Road. Thought it was item seven.
You're next then, okay.
Disregard. Ms. Williams, public comments?
I don't know if he signed in for the wrong one, but George Antor. You're going to speak to this one?
I guess my, my question applies to both, is that if this is wanting to receive water outside the city limits, I'm going to be asking both of you. I'll ask you on the next one, too, is do you plan on annexing in the city limits, or is this some, one of those situations that you'll be paying outside the city limit rate?
Maybe let Brian, Brian answer.
Okay, perfect. Y'all can answer that question whenever, for both.
Okay, Liz. Brian Guidry, Chief Civil Engineer, LUS. The Cameron Street project cannot annex into the city of Lafayette. It's, it's, it's in an unincorporated area, but it's surrounded by the city of Scott. So it can't annex into the city of Lafayette. The Tolson Road project, which is the next agenda item, it is, it can annex into the ci, it can do that.
Okay. And will they be paying the, I know there's a premium, more expensive rate?
Yeah, if you're, if you're outside the city limits, you pay a different rate than if you're inside the city limits. So since both of them will be outside of the city limits, if you approve it, they'll be in unincorporated areas of the parish, they'll play, they'll have to pay the outer-city rates.
Perfect. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, hold on a second, please. Brian? Hold on. Mr. Lazar?
Are these requests being made for industrial or commercial purposes, I'm assuming?
The Cameron Street is a commercial development. The Tolson Road is residential.
Mr. Nakain?
It's my understanding that the Cameron Street property already has these services. The reason for this is just to upgrade, to accommodate the growth of the property and the business. The service is already there.
That's correct.
So we're just voting to allow them to upgrade, to, to do what they need to do at their expense to improve the property.
That's correct. They, they currently, it was the old furniture build, furniture store building on Cameron Street.
Home furniture, I think.
Yeah, and they, they already had, they already had LUS water and sewer. The people coming in, they're, they're redoing the whole building, and the type of facility that they're going to be using it for is going to require additional water.
So this is, this is not new service. This is just allowing that upgrade.
Exactly.
Simple. Thank you.
That's correct.
So, so Brian, my understanding is that was for both, he also for both, the gentleman had put Tolson Road in.
No, the Tolson Road.
That's new.
Let's just finish this one first.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's why I want to make sure.
Thank you. My name is George Anton. I'm responsible for the Cameron facilities. I'm the owner, and my partner here helping me rebuild and remodel the whole thing. I'm an old Lafayette USL graduate, UL graduate. My daughter lives here. I wanted to come back and, and build a business here. My wife's from Mariposas, so I feel it's home away from home. And we bought this building and with the hope to create a, a commercial kitchen, basically, that we have built in Connecticut. So I have two chefs, my daughter and my sister, and we will be supplying product to the surrounding states. But we decided to build it in Lafayette to come back home and, and create some economic development for the city that we love. And that's what we're going to be doing. And again, the, the service is there. We're looking for an upgrade. It's a, it's a commercial kitchen, so we'll be pushing a little bit more water than, than the furniture discount, and, and we're hoping to, to be part of the community.
That's it? Any more public, I mean, any public comments? No? Okay.
James Pochet, did you want to speak?
I want just to be helpful with the architect and engineer.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just want to be sure. Thank you.
Hey, I need a vote from the council.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
City Resolution twenty twenty twenty. A resolution of the Lafayette City Council approving water service outside of the corporate limits of the city of Lafayette in accordance with Ordinance thirty-two-thousand-fifteen LPUA three-one-one and three-one-five Tolson Road.
Motion and second, please. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Andy Nakain. Council discussion. Okay, any public comments?
Yes.
He didn't sign in. Did you sign in?
I've been sitting here since six o'clock.
Oh, okay.
That's all good.
Ms. Cook has a question.
Well, I just, can you? Yeah, I was just going to say, but, you know, we spoke, you basically are just trying to, you don't want to, you wanted to annex into the city, but the city couldn't do sewer for you, so you're just asking for water.
I have to purchase a sewer plant?
Right.
And pay for the water service?
Correct.
I think it's an unfair burden to have to do the sewer plant, and everybody around me is not annexed, and they have water. It's just one lot. It's not a big area.
Right. And so that's, I mean, that's, that's basically what he's asking, so.
And sir, could you say your name for the record?
Justin Spielert.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Okay, let's call for the vote, please.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Okay, ordinance for final adoption. This is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, please read item number nine.
City Ordinance thirty-nine twenty twenty. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette mayor president to sell certain surplus property consisting of a vacant lot located at four-zero-nine South Washington Street, Lafayette, Louisiana, seven-oh-five-oh-one, that is no longer needed for public purposes and to amend the fiscal year nineteen-twenty operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by budgeting the sale proceeds of fourteen-thousand-and-one dollar in the city sales tax capital improvement fund and reducing the use of prior year fund balance.
Motion and a second, please. Motion by Ms. Haver, second by Mr. Nakain. Any council discussion? I see none. Ms. Williams, public comments?
Yes, sir.
Vote on this item, please.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
City Ordinance forty twenty twenty. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the contribution of one retired line truck to South Louisiana Community College pursuant to intergovernmental agreement.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Mr. Nakain?
Is there any possible way to value this truck at like two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-thousand dollars, Mr. Scott, so we can write it off better? Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nakain. Okay, Ms. Williams, any public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, call for the vote, please.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yep.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
City Ordinance forty-one twenty twenty. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the issuance and sale of public improvement sales tax refunding bonds, series twenty-twenty, taxable public improvement sales tax refunding bonds, series twenty-twenty-A, and public improvement sales tax bond, series twenty-twenty-B, of the city of Lafayette, state of Louisiana, approving the preliminary official statement in connection therewith, providing for the sale of said bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Nakain. Okay, legal has proposed an amendment to add language clarifying the paying agent as Hancock Whitney Bank. I need a motion and a second for the proposed amendment. Motion by Mr. Nakain, second by Ms. Haver. Council discussion? I see there's none. Ms. Williams, any public comments? Need a vote on the amendment.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Call for vote from the council to adopt the ordinance as amended.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved.
City Ordinance forty-two twenty twenty. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the issuance of not exceeding thirty-five million dollars of taxable limited tax bonds, series twenty-twenty-A, of the city of Lafayette, state of Louisiana, prescribing the form, terms, and conditions of said bonds, designating the date, denomination, and place of payment of said bonds, providing for the payment thereof in principal and interest, authorizing in principal and interest, authorizing the agreement with the paying agent, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
That's motion and second. Mr. Lazar, motion, second by Ms. Cook. Legal has proposed an amendment to add language clarifying the paying agent as Hancock Whitney Bank. I need a motion and second for the proposed amendment. Motion by Mr. Nakane, second by Ms. Abear. Counsel discussion? There's none. Need a vote on the amendment. Any public comments? Vote on the amendment.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Vote on the council to adopt the ordinance as amended.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved. City Ordinance 432020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the issuance and sale of taxable public improvement sales tax refunding bonds Series 2020C and public improvement sales tax bond Series 2020D of the city of Lafayette, state of Louisiana, approving the preliminary official statement in connection therewith, providing for the sale of said bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Legal has proposed an amendment to add language clarifying the paying agent as Hancock Whitney Bank. Need a motion and a second on the proposed. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Public comments? Okay, and I need a vote on the amendment.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? District one?
Yes.
District two? Motion to amend is approved.
Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance as amended.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six? District one?
Yes.
District two? Motion to adopt as amended is approved. City Ordinance 442020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the issuance of not exceeding $27,500,000 of taxable limited tax refunding bonds Series 2020 of the city of Lafayette, state of Louisiana, prescribing the form, fixing the details, and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds and the application of the proceeds thereof to the refunding of certain bonds of the city and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Nakane? Second by Ms. Cook. Legal has proposed an amendment to add language clarifying the paying agent as Hancock Whitney Bank. Need a motion and second on the proposed amendment. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Andy Nakane. Counsel discussion? There's none, public comments?
No, sir.
Need a vote on the amendment.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance as amended.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved. City Ordinance 452020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the abandonment of the right-of-way for K Street and the granting of a temporary utility servitude on the property of Andre Arin Legay located in the 100 block of K Street.
Motion and second. Motion by Mr. Lazar, second by Mr. Nakane. Counsel discussion? There's none, public comments?
No, sir.
Need a vote to adopt the ordinance.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 462020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code so as to reclassify the property of Integrity Development Group LLC, case number ZON 2020-71606 West Willow Street rezoning located generally west of Reading Avenue, north of West Willow Street, and south of Interstate 10, being rezoned from industrial light to commercial mixed.
Motion and second. Motion by Mr. Lazar, second by Ms. Cook. Counsel discussion? There's none, public comment?
No, sir.
Vote to adopt the ordinance.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 472020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code and the official map of the city of Lafayette, providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the city of Lafayette, Louisiana, case number ZON 2020-8 Woodlands Cove subdivision annexation located generally south of Ambassador Caffrey Parkway, west of Shamin Metairie Road, and east of Vero School Road, and assigning a zoning classification of residential single family.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Counsel discussion? Public comments?
No, sir.
Vote to adopt the ordinance.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 482020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council approving a conditional use permit to allow a self-service storage facility in a commercial mixed zoning district, case number ZON 2020-91501 La Nouvelle Road, conditional use permit located generally north of Ambassador Caffrey Parkway, east of Vero School Road, and west of Shamin Metairie Road.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Counsel discussion? There's none, public comment?
No, sir.
Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two? Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 492020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code so as to reclassify the property of Chris Dean Tyler, case number ZON 2020-10125 DeMello Road rezoning located generally east of Penn Hook Road, north of La Rue France, and west of Test Drive, the particular parcel being rezoned from commercial heavy to mixed-use neighborhood.
Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Nakane. Counsel discussion? Public comments?
No, sir.
Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 502020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code so as to reclassify the property of Lafayette Habitat for Humanity Incorporated, case number ZON 2020-11, 100 block Frank Street rezoning located generally west of Penn Hook Road, east of South General Marshall Street, and south of Clifford Street, the particular parcel being rezoned from commercial heavy residential single family to mixed-use neighborhood.
Need a motion and second. Motion by Ms. Abear, second by Ms. Cook. Counsel discussion? There's none, public comment?
No, sir.
Vote to adopt the ordinance.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 512020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code so as to reclassify the property of Salum LLC and Pine Farm Limited, case number ZON 2020-121500 Block Camellia Boulevard rezoning located generally south of Camellia Boulevard, east of Cali Salum Road, and west of Bluebird Drive, the particular parcel being rezoned from agricultural, residential, single family to commercial mixed.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Abear, second by Mr. Nakane. Counsel discussion? None, public comments? Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 522020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $94,473.11 from the upgrade police building elevators line item to building renovations repairs line item used for various LCG building maintenance projects managed by the Public Works Department Facilities Maintenance Division.
I need a second, but first I need a motion. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Ms. Abear. Counsel discussion? Mr. Nakane?
Yeah, who would be speaking to this, out of curiosity? Public Works? I hope we didn't wake you, sir.
Have to wake up.
There you go. You got some coffee, huh?
Yeah.
Just a, Mr. Chad Neve, how you doing, sir?
Good.
Just a quick question.